Call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Like to start with a moment of silence for the following. Mason J. De Shaw attended schools in the North Syracuse Central School District. And Chris Kopp, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we have three presentations tonight, but we're going to go a little bit out of order if it's okay with the presenters. We're going to skip to B first because our presenters for A are delayed. So if the North Syracuse Central School District Long Range Facilities Planning update people, that's going to be Matt, I guess, and whoever. Okay. When you're ready, it's all yours. Thank you.
Or Matt gets started. I just want to make a quick comment that with this presentation, I just want to make sure people don't get confused with we do have a separate committee for our strategic planning, but this is about the building condition survey.
Sorry about that. So back in January on the 25th, we met with the board and we talked about a few different things. We talked about our long-term facilities planning goal, our desire to respect prior planning efforts. And we talked a little bit about our current challenges and opportunities. We were just completing the building condition surveys at this point in time. We didn't really have full detail yet, but we shared a little bit about our aging portfolio. Some of the changes in enrollment in our demographics and a little bit about the constant flux of our state of economy. We shared that broad overview of current conditions and the expected need potentially for an interim project. Okay, so today we'd really like to share some of the progress that's been made toward a long-range facilities plan. Some specifics regarding our individual building needs and some recommended next steps. Mr. Bowles and the educational side of the district have really done a lot recently to get a strategic planning committee kicked off. So this committee has been tasked to revisit and update Vision 2020. We talked a lot about in the last meeting, the importance of the educational side of the house leading facilities planning. Okay, that's always going to be the case. It's the project team's desire to work with this group to further understand program needs and to use them as a resource and guide throughout long-range facilities planning, like we discussed back in January. And this will really allow them to lead and guide the development of our facilities planning efforts. And here today with us, I've got Kirk with King &amp; King and Paul Johnston with King &amp; King and Dan Fox with IBC Engineering. They're going to walk us through a little bit about the process and then a little bit about the details on each building.
So we started this whole process last year with the building condition survey. And just to give people a little summary about what that means. New York State is one of the few states in the nation that has done and started 20 years ago a full assessment of all its education buildings on a five-year cycle. It was started by Carl Thurnow at the State Education Department. It's a checklist. It's meant to provide a consistent overview of school facilities. The original intent of it and the intent as it still exists today for the building condition survey is to allow, you know, an attempted quantifying the amount of potential infrastructure work that's out there in the state of New York so that the legislative bodies can budget appropriately the aid for capital construction projects. So that's really where the building condition survey came from. Just this year, we started in New York State, a five-year rolling cycle. So all the districts in the state were split up into fifths. And now we're going to be doing districts on a five-year cycle, but they're not going to all happen in the same year. So in 2015 was the last year that we did all the districts in the state at the same time. What the building condition survey allows us to do is to do a complete evaluation of all the buildings and really document the status of a series of components in the building. But it's not the end-all because there are things that don't show up in the building condition survey because it's a checklist. I.e. educational programming and visions that districts might have about programs that they want to initiate. We're not going to, that's not going to be quantified necessarily in the building condition survey. So it's really focused on the infrastructure elements. So over this last year, we've done a great job with the team, with the district and ourselves going through each of the buildings and identifying and then submitting to the state of New York, every component within the checklist for the building condition survey. Concurrently with that, the district also tapped into a grant program in New York State that allowed for energy audits to be conducted for each of the buildings that the district has as well. So we have that information, which was very informative to being able to look very closely at the systems, especially on the energy management side of things with each of the buildings. And then all of this stuff gets collected and is part of a long-range planning exercise that we're undertaking right now that will take the strategic planning vision and then create a long-range plan for the district and line up all these components that we've learned about all the facilities. So as I mentioned before, it's a year-long effort. We concluded in March with uploading all of that data to the state of New York for the building condition survey. On top of all of the information that was gathered as part of that process, we have a capital planning spreadsheet that has a little over 650 items identified, which is all of the information in the building condition surveys plus some additional items, which again are items that may not show up in the checklist that we have to, you know, load for the state, but are important for us to be able to identify. So our focus moving forward is going to be really prioritizing these items and definitely in an order of starting with being code compliant with the buildings, also health and safety. And we're going to see today when Paul and Dan start talking about each of the buildings and how that relates to indoor air quality in particular, coming out of a pandemic and with the stimulus funding that's available, that's a huge focus. It was a focus before, but now obviously it's even more of a focus. And then obviously really concentrating on those priority infrastructure items so that we're not looking at things that become more of a problem sooner because we let them sit for a while. And again, this is all part of that big master plan. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan and Paul and they're going to run through each of the buildings.
Great, thank you. All right, folks, we have 650 items to go through. It's about 84 pages of data, so buckle in. All right, I could. Thanks for your time. What we're presenting is really, as we sorted and sifted through the data and a lot of it, we look at, anytime we're talking about useful life of an item, we're looking at how many years is left in its lifespan. And so we really started to look at which items rose to the top first from a maintenance standpoint and items that were communicated by the facilities department that were issues for them. And then also the items that were, you know, in that zero to five-year range, we looked at very closely. And so with that in mind, this is the abbreviated list, but really the items that are sort of the most urgent status. And so our task tonight was to download this data to you and sort of go through these. And we can dive into them as needed and as your questions sort of drive us. But from a high-level standpoint, we've grouped some of these together, starting with Lake Shore and Cicero. Both buildings, both elementary schools, pretty similar. Large aspects of Cicero were never renovated. It's an interesting question we got very early on because everyone noted that Cicero was really the first renovation of the 90s master plan. But the reality was, and this occurs at a majority of the district's buildings, through those 90s and early 2000s projects, they were often adding space to the buildings or additions on the buildings, not necessarily renovating all the systems and the finishes within the original portions. So that's where you find at Cicero, there really were minimal renovations to the interior. So most of the building is exactly what we talked about with Smith Road and more recently with Bear Road, a 50s and 60s building with a small, I think, four-classroom addition added in the 90s. Lake Shore is the last elementary school in that 90s master plan to be done, has not been done and has always been talked about that it would follow behind Bear Road. So again, a building that is 60 to 70 years old, depending on which portion of it you're talking about. So again, both these buildings in general, well beyond their useful life and significant portions are in need of a full-scale renovation. What really drove these two buildings to be grouped and a key factor in when we talk about CNS is the mechanical systems. And so I want to turn it over to Dan and let him talk a little bit more about the issues with the mechanical.
So with both Lake Shore and Cicero. All right, how's that? Okay, there, that works. So.
I got it. All right, so.
Don't hold the button.
All right, let's try this again. Okay, so as Paul was mentioning, Lake Shore and Cicero are one of the older elementary schools in the district. And one of the things that when we were touring the buildings that I thought was interesting was that many of the ventilation systems, the exhaust systems, a lot of the piping systems, they're all original equipment and it's a real testament, quite frankly, to your maintenance crew to keep this equipment going for so long. You've done some boiler plant projects and some control projects and a miscellaneous air handler here and there for specific program needs, but as a global look at it, much of this equipment is original and is, as Paul says, is at the end of its useful life. So to give you a little bit of perspective, if you were to look at Lake Shore, the original building, it was built in 1950. So that means the equipment in that section of the building is approximately 71 years old. So when you think about that, that's pretty amazing that that equipment's still up and running, but it is definitely in need. And you look at the addition, which was doubling the building size, that was in the early 60s, 62. You know, that puts a lot of that equipment at 59 years old. So it certainly doesn't owe you anything, but again, it is in dire need to be replaced. Beyond the mechanical systems, fire alarm systems are also obsolete and require different coverage. So part of the problem is they're not supported anymore. So getting parts to maintain them and to add to them is very, very, very difficult. And the P A. systems fall along in the same vein.
Right, and the final items that we noted at the building, not necessarily exact building condition survey questions, but just broader items at both buildings, undersized kindergarten rooms, a lack of secure entry, particularly at Lake Shore, and a lack of adequate handicap-accessible facilities throughout the building. So moving on to CNS as the third building in particular, where heating and cooling systems really were at a, at a poor stage, I'll say.
So at, so at CNS, you know, very similar kind of a concept. So I guess that could be a newer building in some people's minds. I know as I get older, time is somewhat not necessarily relevant. But anyways, so this was a building that was built in the late 60s, early 70s. The majority of all the air handling equipment in that building is still in service in that building. It is what we call a dual-duck, dual-temperature system, which was very popular in the 60s and early 70s, but was known to be rather difficult to control. And I think anybody who has spent time at CNS, and I've talked to some of the folks, have shared when I've said to them, I bet you you have a lot of hot spaces and cold spaces all within the same day. And it's very difficult to, you know, have a really good learning environment. And I've gotten a lot of positive feedback, at least acknowledging that yes, that is definitely a big part of the issue. When you start to take a look at the equipment, the heating piping has had a lot of leaks from their joints. That's been something chronic. So every year when the system starts up, it expands and you'll start to get leaks periodically throughout the building, which create other damage to the building infrastructure. We know from some water testing on the chill water piping that the interior of the chill water piping is showing signs of degradation. So it's actually coming apart on the inside. So it's making that system rather vulnerable as well. We observed a lot of rotted faces to these, you know, 50-some-year fans. We found a lot of insulation that had to be removed because it had been compromised over time and just generally at the end of its useful life, including exhaust systems and the like. So one of the things that we looked at, when we looked at the energy, we were, we said, all right, what if we put in a system of current technology? You know, nothing super fancy, just something that, very similar to what we're doing over at Bear Road. And the interesting, more interesting information came out of that. So what did we find out? We found out if you replace the current system that you have now with a, again, more of a conventional system that you would typically see at a high school, you would reduce your annual utility just on the HVAC by 28% a year. And that equates to roughly $68,000 a year. So not only would you be replacing equipment that is in dire need to be replaced, but you'll realize a considerable amount of energy savings, not only that, but also indoor air quality, controllability, the thermal comfort, all the things that are really necessary for, you know, for a very solid learning environment. Lighting on that, if you throw that into it as well, that would save you an additional $32,000 a year. So if you combined, if you did just an HVAC project and a lighting project, there's some other things you could do, but you're looking at reducing your annual utility by about $100,000 a year. So not only would you be upgrading your facilities, but you will see some other costs reduced considerably as well.
Great, some other items.
And there's also the similar issues with the P A., fire alarm, and also some panels.
We also noticed, though, the roofing in general, a majority of it is in good shape. There's still one remaining section that is beyond its useful life. We noticed and got a lot of comments about the gym and the auditorium. The floor is beyond its useful life. The bleachers are sketchy at best and very difficult to move in and out. And there's always a lot of comments about the auditorium. That's something we've heard for, you know, a decade now and beyond that even. So we put in there to consider renovating, fully renovating the gym and the auditorium, not only to address the safety needs first and foremost, but there's also program needs that would really benefit, particularly at the auditorium. And then finally, we talked last time back in January about how many acres and miles of paving and sidewalks you have within the district and need to maintain. And so you'll see at all the buildings or most all of the buildings, we talk about repaving a portion of that. And so we're really, again, highlighting the areas that are in the worst shape and trying to be strategic about the amount of paving that can be done at any given time. All right, so moving on, so those first three buildings were really, the mechanical systems were the real drivers and the most serious issues. Moving on to these next three buildings, this is the bus mechanic garage, which is on Taft Road, East Taft Road, sort of in the back adjacent to where the new Fuel Island was built. The maintenance building, which is just in front of it, white, small white C M U., sort of a bunker of a building. And then the Cicero garage, all these buildings, particularly the bus mechanic garage, are showing significant structural deterioration. The bus mechanic garage, we actually had a structural engineer go and look at it again. And we're looking at some temporary things that can be done just to make sure that that the structure stays intact until the district has time to think about that building longer term. As a whole, the main feedback on all these buildings were not only, not only are they beyond their useful life, they're certainly undersized for the uses and the people trying to work within them. And so that's where you see there's the potential to, or a recommendation to remove those buildings and to think about a new shared facility on that site. Particularly when you think about the cost just to repair what you have now, it's definitely cost prohibitive to. And then the final piece of that is to eliminate the old Fuel Island, which again is reaching a point. D E C. is going to start asking more and more questions if that's not addressed. All right, so again, Main Street, there's parking, there's, the rear lot in particular was in very poor shape. The roof is from the 80s and that's a good portion of that roof. There is a newer section from the early 2000s, but again, it's less than five years of life. So while roofing, you may want to consider doing the entire building. At a minimum, the early 80s portion is way beyond its useful life.
So you're going to see when we go through some of the other buildings, especially the buildings with steam, we did a, as part of our energy review, we did a steam trap audit. And what that is, is we use an infrared gun to determine if steam traps on all of your steam equipment is actually working. And what a steam trap does is it just does that, what it implies. It, when your, when your load is satisfied, it stops the ability for steam to move into your heating device, which provides it so you wouldn't overheat the space. And one of the things that we determined in our modeling was, and also our surveys, is that there is a high percentage throughout the district of failed steam traps. And what does that mean? That means extra utility expense. Right now, we're looking at, for Main Street, you would get it within five, about five years, you would totally pay for having those steam traps replaced. So that's, that's a good energy measure as well as it will help hot and cold heating locations. I guess a bigger concern at Main Street was the electrical system. It is all, it's an older cloth and rubber-covered wired. It tends to break down over time. It gets very brittle. If it's, if it's within a conduit and an inside and you don't touch it, usually won't have any issues, but it certainly is a concern. A bigger issue is the way that the building was grounded and it's not grounded within it with individual grounding wire. It is through the conduit system, which is not a code-compliant way of doing things and is not as reliable as a hardwired grounding system. The one thing not mentioned on there as well is there was a lack of ground fault receptacles, which is, which is also a concern.
Right, good point. So overall, the building requires significant renovations to the interior. There's still a lot of asbestos tile and the finishes in general, as you can imagine, from a, portions of the building are from the 30s or potentially the 20s. I mix those dates up. Was it really? So again, we recommend the district consider sort of their long-term use prior to doing any investments in this building and just think about the role that this facility in general plays within the district, just to make sure it's money well-spent. Moving on to Gillette Road, again, paving, roofing, a 1979-built-up roof. I think that's the oldest one we found at this point. There's some pumps and mechanical units at the second-story classroom wing at the end of their age. And at the same time as upgrading those, we did note that it might make sense to also, while doing that work, also add air conditioning since you're already replacing those systems. I don't know, Dan, if I'm sort of stepping on your toes.
Gillette's a little, little different. It's got a lot of newer equipment, I guess, in the grand scheme of things. They don't build things the way you used to. So you know, what's interesting is you go back to elementary schools and you've got equipment that's lasting 71 years. And now we're talking about equipment that's about 20 years old and at the end of its useful life. So they don't build things the way they used to. And that's a very true statement. So the, the two-story wing has had a lot of problems. I think that's been problematic since it was reconstructed about 20 years ago. In our review, we can sort of see that there's some, there is issues with how the building's set up and it's very difficult for the district to control. And that equipment, by today's standards, is nearing its end of useful life. And as Paul mentioned, the rooftops that are on the older roof, it really doesn't make sense to spend a lot of money to pick this equipment up at its age and then put it back down to put a new roof on because it is at its near expected life expectancy. So it does make sense. And as Paul mentioned, I think the goal is to air-condition all your classroom spaces. So that would be a good time to incorporate that.
Great, so moving on to the junior high, the bleachers at the field are a safety concern and certainly well past their useful life. Again, there's parking lots in poor condition. Dan, I'll let you do the next couple there.
So at this school, you have a much better mechanical systems than some of the other schools. The things that sort of stand out here are that there's some, what they call packaged rooftop mechanical equipment. A lot of that equipment is working using refrigerant that is no longer manufactured. So when you go to service that equipment for any air conditioning needs, you're going to pay about six times what you normally would on a standard piece of equipment just because the refrigerant is no longer manufactured. So those items tend to make this list. The chiller, the chiller's a little over, I think it's 25 years old. And one of the things that jumps out with the chiller is that the chiller just required a compressor replacement. When you start to see these compressors go, these are not cheap items. They're $20,000, $25,000 to replace. I think you've got a total of eight compressors on this machine. So you really want to try to get ahead of that so that you don't end up replacing half of the compressors when you could have just bought a new chiller. So that one sort of raised to the top of the list. Auditorium stage lighting and controls are old. I know that that's a very cherished auditorium and the lighting is out of date on that.
Sure. And if you've been in the junior high, I mean, you know, the building, the building is worn. It's dated. Again, another former high school, right, Bob? And so, but those renovations really are tied to the educational planning. And so again, that's, that's why we're not necessarily talking about larger renovations within the building. We did point out the gang toilet rooms on each floor. We got some feedback about safety concerns and that maybe that would be something that could rise to the higher on the list. What would be included with that is just rethinking and reorganizing those rooms and maybe getting the sinks out into the hallways. So moving down the list, Rocks Elementary, again, an early 80s roof, coupled with a roof from the 2000s. I mean strategically, there, it may make sense on smaller buildings like Rocks to just get all the roofing of the same vintage and not have to feel like you're continually returning the buildings to do the small pieces of old roofing. At larger buildings like the middle schools, junior high and high school, maybe it does make sense to not have to do the entire building in one project. So again, steam traps, some select mechanical units and P A. and fire systems, which I think we've, we've mentioned on multiple occasions throughout. Rocks Middle, again, a good amount of paving. We noted a good amount in poor condition. Again, some additional mechanical units and systems, mechanical systems. And then the site lighting, the poles in particular are showing some signs of corrosion and at the end of their useful life. Allen Road, again, sidewalks and curbing in poor condition. The canopy is, again, the exterior metal canopy. There's continual maintenance required with those. We received feedback about the gym and the cafeteria in particular, getting particularly hot throughout the day with a large amount of colder glass. And so again, we just noted that as a potential item to help with the indoor comfort and quality in those two spaces in particular. And then some steam traps and minor mechanical units. Smith Road unfortunately is already hitting the list, but only for a few minor items. The paving and the playgrounds were not part of the last project. And so they are in poor condition and much older than that 2010 project. We did note the P A. and the fire alarm improvement because that would be something that helps trigger building aid. And so that's just on there as a strategic maneuver. Matt, are you?
I just want to interject one thing related to Smith Road's playground. I got word today, the P T O. at Smith Road has already raised the local share for that playground. So it's an incredible effort on their part. I just wanted to give them credit for it. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, and then this building, the district office. So again, as you walk through this building, look around, it's vintage 1950s and 60s finishes. The building as a whole really could use a full renovation at a minimum right now. The roof is beyond its useful life. Steam traps and windows honestly are the bare minimum. There's been conversations here and there, and again, tied to sort of the larger master plan for the district of, does this building remain a district office? Does it become a student-occupied space? We just throw out there that if it were student-occupied, that generates aid. And that might be, again, a strategic move to get significant work done within this building.
It was an elementary school, grade 11. At one time, it was part of the high school, but it's over. But I taught here, I started in 1971 and it closed in 77.
Great. And then finally, the Transportation Food Service Building, which is the old Burdick dealership on East Taft Road. So again, a project that we were involved in in 2009, eight or nine. The parking lot was not done at that time and is in poor condition. There is a 1982 roof beyond its useful life. There is a 1982 roof beyond its useful life, though not showing any issues. There's a typo on your slide there. There are no issues currently. And then finally, the storefront windows at the front of the building are approaching the end of their useful life. There's the those large glass windows there. So with that, that's the that's the cream of the crop on the list.
So what Dan and and Paul just shared with you are 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 what we identified as the most urgent needs at collectively all the buildings in the district. So the next steps, we started this process with a master plan that we piggybacked on in 2008, which was the last time we did an overall master plan. I know many of the board members that are here were involved with that, including Bob. We need to start that process again, based on the strategic vision of the of the school and how that feeds into a longer vision of how we're going to utilize these these buildings. So Paul touched on some of those that include Main Street, the transportation campus, and then also what ultimately may we may want to use this building as in the future, as we start to plan out this long range plan. Always a priority on that list for the last three decades has been making sure that we take care of the most urgent needs at the buildings, which include the elementary schools, which have been on the list and lined up for now since we've been involved with the district, which include Cicero and Lake Shore. In the Lake Shore, my two daughters went to Lake Shore. I know that building very well. It's amazing for me to think that 15 years later, we're still talking about the same exact things and it's still working for the district, but it's it's literally on its last legs because we we've never been able to actually get there. So those are definitely a high priority. The rest of them are going to be prioritized in a way as we identify today to take care of those things that we believe are most urgent that the district needs to take on. So we're not paying more money in the short term to fix things because we let them go any longer. And so that's definitely going to be be part of that discussion. We're going to then move into this kind of long range plan with the rest of these elements so that we get a greater picture. But as we keep talking to you about is that there's several parallel paths with this process. And so we're going to have to undertake some of these more urgent items that we identified today while we talk about the longer range plan of the district. And in doing so, we're going to very carefully look at how do we capitalize and maximize aid for these projects? Because overall, we're looking at a pretty significant mass of need. And the best that we can do for representing the district and the taxpayers of the district is how do we maximize the money that we're going to spend so that we can maximize the aid that we get back from the state? And, you know, I wish we had a few more hours. I could go into how the state evaluates how we generate aid on buildings, but that's for a whole nother time. But we have a cap, a maximum cost allowance for each of the buildings that we can undertake to maximize the aid that we get back from the state. And so we have to be very careful about how we structure the overall plan so that we don't exceed those and we can capitalize on those on those aid costs. And so that's what this team's going to be doing in the short term as we look forward to the the next steps.
Thanks, Kirk. Absolutely appreciate it. So back in January, we shared a potential timeline. Were we to consider an interim project? There were several critical steps that we had to act on to move forward. And I just want to revisit a couple of them and and get some consensus. First off, we talked about considering a new capital reserve and and really getting into a deep dive on our financial options. We talked about prioritizing the work ahead with the support of fiscal advisors, King and King and Watchdog Building Partners, our construction managers. We need to begin that seeker process, just like we are today for the capital outlet CNS to do structural work very, very soon so that we can take care of the six month long process that the fuel island is going to draw us into and some of these other renovations may draw us into. And we really need to start engaging with the community, getting some feedback on the needs of the district and and working with them more so on the long range plan than the short term needs. But we do want to get out to the buildings. We want to talk to faculty. We want people to understand what the needs are in the buildings. We want their feedback so that we don't miss anything in the process and that we capture information we may have overlooked. Okay. It's daunting. It's not surprising. Many other districts are in similar situations to where we're at today. You know, Liverpool just went through a huge undertaking. Balden'sville is doing a bunch of work. This is a national problem. It's not just the North Syracuse problem. Okay, we have an overwhelming amount of work to do to get our buildings in the condition they need to be in for our students. It's a big task and there's a lot to do coming forward. We need to like, like we talked about with Kirk, careful consideration needs to be given to fully utilizing our available financial options. My office is working to find grant money with NYSERTA. I work with them through the School Facilities Association regularly to develop new grant programs. So we're on the the cusp of everything that comes up and we've got a little bit of influence to to guide that process to benefit our district and districts around the state, which is a great opportunity that we have. But ultimately, our entire goal is to really mitigate tax levy. Okay, any way we can save money as a district to to put toward local share? Any way we can fundraise, anything we can do to minimize and mitigate tax levy is important to all of our stakeholders. Not acting now only adds to our needs as costs continue to rise annually. Okay, so this isn't going away on its own. So we really need to keep that in mind and and be a little bit more proactive in addressing it. I don't think we've been quite aggressive enough in the past and and we need to make a little bit more forward progress. But I thank you all for your time and your efforts and look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? I I'll just, I'll just tell you that Mike and I met with the committee and did review this and it what it is overwhelming at at first look, but there are definitely some need to do, need to address items that we have to deal with relatively soon. And then I think the rest really depends on the strategic plan. Questions, comments or?
Yeah, you know, I want. Now they like like it when I'm off, okay? For everybody that came through and did this, it's a lot of work. It's much appreciated by the school board. The last statement tells it all. If you don't do it now, I was always told and I always believed never cut the maintenance, never cut, cut it because in the long run you will pay for it. So what I'm looking at, I believe, is our timeline, which would be that we're going to be looking at some safety concerns and some things that probably have to be brought up first. And then as Dan said, it's different in that he will have a committee which will be looking at how we want to use the facilities down the road. And I would ask Dan that definitely some board members should be on that committee when you start that part of it. But yeah, I'm ready to move forward.
I just had a question about the shortage of skilled labors. There's still that issue of the resources to address all these projects.
I'll talk a little bit about on the maintenance side of things. We are having a little bit more success of late, finding talented individuals to come to work for the district. With the Bear Road project, we've had a very stable workforce and we've been very fortunate not to experience any of those pains locally. And I'll let Kirk talk a little bit about what he sees in the market.
Yeah, this is a challenge. It's not going to go anywhere anytime soon. We we have about a 10 to 15 year gap in skilled labor across the board. So if you talk to any of the contractors or subcontractors, they continue to struggle with how to fill that pipeline. There is hope, especially from a lot of the CTE programs in the state and and others that are that are filling what was a pretty significant void for a long time and trying to get some skilled labor back into that marketplace. And so we're seeing some positive signs with that, especially with the associated general contractors and facilities partnerships, as well as with the AI, the American Institute of Architects to continue to mentor and bring people into that marketplace. But we are going to see that to be a challenge. And added to that this year and even last year was the shortages in material and supplies that are adding even more burden to that. So we are entering some uncharted territory with how to best manage these things and protect everybody's best interests. The good thing is that we have a lot of experience with it. We have a great team here. We're constantly on top of it and, you know, it's great to have Matt, especially with his involvement statewide with the facilities because we're all talking to one another and trying to to do our best to stay ahead of what these challenges are and try to come up with strategies to deal with these things. What's great is that there's tools that are being made available that were never made available, particularly to school districts, to allow us to do some of these things in different ways than the traditional kind of public bidding process even. So, you know, we keep adding a little bit more to of these tools and it just gives us a little bit more flexibility to try and overcome some of this.
We do have a serious cost of lumber issue right now. And I know there's processes and timelines to get passed before we can even begin any work. But do you have any idea of when those lumber costs will come down to a reasonable rate?
No.
Good answer. The other is.
It's a great question. I get, we get this question a a ton. I mean, I'm doing my back deck right now and and the my my cost for just some of the 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 materials for that, which is not a big deck, went up about 30% in just the last month. So.
Wow.
The other two is, of course, you mentioned safety issues. Are there ways to break those apart to say these safety issues that can be addressed first cost X and kind of just separate those out to get an idea of what that might cost? That is overwhelming, that list.
No, it is an overwhelming list and and our job is going to be as a team to use the tools that we have to basically line them up in that order with the safety and security items at the top of the list and then draw a line basically in the sand to see what that looks like. Evaluate that against the financial elements. And then we continue to kind of massage that list as we as we go along to see what we can plug in. There's some efficiencies with adding, if we can, some other types of projects into that. You know, from a scale standpoint, that might be more efficient than just concentrating on necessarily just those only. But we're going to be evaluating all of that.
Okay, any, any other comments? All right, thank you very much. And I, are we prepared to go back to the NSCF grant presentation? Okay, we will turn that over to you and thank you. Here. You're streaming.
Push the button. There we go. First of all, I would like to say that we are very sorry for coming so late, but we're still on the seven o'clock schedule. And you know, there was COVID for like the whole year. So that's why we haven't been here in a long time. But thank you so much for changing us. Yes.
Started at six instead of seven.
Yeah.
So consequently, I just threw on what I had.
I didn't. I didn't dress up safe, but thank you so much for for changing our your our time and everything. I really appreciate it.
Let me just say that, you know, I know what Carolyn has done for this district. So I think a little time partying, this is forgivable.
I'm not usually late. Okay, I'm Carolyn Gross. I'm with the North Syracuse Education Foundation and Jan Gilkey is also on our board. We currently have about seven members now and we're working to get everything that we can done as quickly as we can, whenever we can. We're going to present our grant winner in a minute. Okay, she's here. It's a hard decision whether for us to whether to go ahead with our grant process this year because of COVID. But we decided we try to keep our year as as well or as as the same as we could. As normal as we could. We decided that. And then we also decided to do a project along with Operation Northern Comfort. And we provided desks for students in our district.
Yeah, and we also borrowed a truck from.
Right, the district helped us. We got the truck and we delivered.
And we all delivered desks.
The desks to each of the homes.
And they were thrilled. I mean, just the look on their eyes. The kids were absolutely thrilled to get a desk.
So that was that was our new project for us this year. So we had never done that before. Matter of fact, they just had their big crab festival down wherever they had that for money raising too. One thing we do have all year long is a SAR grant, which is a special administrative grant. And that can go on throughout the year. So you don't need a a grant cycle period. And some administrators have done this. We've gone through Roxboro, we've gone to the junior high. And so, you know, that is also available for anyone and administrator in the district. So now we're going to present Carrie Del Pachetto. She'd come forward. Carrie is a counselor at Roxboro Elementary. And her her grant was titled Social Emotional Book Library Part Two. Yeah, we're purchasing books that could that she can read to students that tell or deal with socioeconomic situations that students face such as family changes, growth mindset, feeling expression, loss of a pet, maybe mindful coping skills, good sportsmanship, anxiety. And she would read these. We were writing about 20 books for her and as a counselor and with this whole COVID thing. I think it's very appropriate that she we has, she has gotten this grant from us this year. So thank you, Carrie. Any questions? We're open for suggestions for things that we can help the district with. We're always, we're always open to try new things and, you know, so that's something we can.
Just want to make a quick comment. The North Syracuse Education Foundation has really done wonders for all the grant winners in the past years. And it's really making a difference in the lives of children and families. And we value the efforts and as we move past the pandemic, we hope that there are more grant people that are applying so that we can deliver some more things throughout the the buildings that for the teachers that apply. So thank you.
Personally, I'm looking forward to when this is all gone and we can go back to those wonderful annual dinners that you that you booked together.
Well, well, thank you. And I'll I'll thank you ahead of time as we go down the agenda. We'll be accepting five gifts from the North Syracuse, sir, excuse me, North Syracuse Education Foundation. So thank you, much appreciated.
We when we had our first meeting, we expressed an interest in trying to do something positive for all the teachers, for every single employee of the North Syracuse School District. And so we thought, you know, the little hand sanitizer on a clip, you know, was just a small token of appreciation for all the hard work that every single person does in our district.
Right.
And and I mean, it went to everybody. And so we hope that you appreciated our small gift and.
Places like the, when we were at the the district office, not the district office, but over at food service or transportation, they were just shocked. Yeah, that was just, they were just shocked.
And the bus drivers too. Yeah.
They were even given.
We would think of them. So that's a good thing. So please think of other ideas and anything that you might, even something small, you know, that that you would wouldn't necessarily, you know, put into, you know, regular budget or whatever, like, you know, something like that. We're open for any suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. See Mr. Rice there waiting patiently. We have a robotics and technology presentation, so it's all yours, Mr. Rice.
Good evening. I will just get this set first.
Okay, first of all, I want to introduce myself. My name is John Rice. I'm an instructional director with the district. I'm sorry. Just return to meeting. On the right, right there. You mean on the left, return to meeting, it says. Okay, I'll start this again. My name is John Rice. I'm an instructional director with the district. One of the areas that I oversee is technology education. Behind me is Marty Minor, a technology education teacher at the high school. You'll see he has a lot of toys that he's going to be sharing with you, some great things. Some of you may recall industrial arts in the past. Well, if you remember back in the seventies, maybe eighties, some of you may have been around then. I don't want to date anyone, but.
Cutting boards. Made my mother an ashtray. She didn't smoke anymore though, but.
But that evolved into technology education. And although we still use things like drill presses, electrical routers, table saws, you'll see that, you know, many of the tools we now use are are digital in nature or use computers to that are programmed to develop and make some great things. And Marty, if you don't want, if you would like to maybe share some of the things, your first from the first picture on the left, you'll see a laser cutter and engraver. This is we have this at the high school and some of the things that the students have produced from this. Marty will pass around and share.
Just start handing them out round robin. As I talk about them. And so the first ones here are for the laser engraving. It's a tool that we picked up a couple of years ago now, and we're integrating it into the classes that we have going at the high school from the engineering classes to we even have a coaster here that was manufactured in the wood shop where we have our CNC router. They bring it over to the laser engraver in the room next door and they can engrave on the face of that. And then some key tags and things like that that we've manufactured over the the course of the years. In 3D printing, again, they do some pretty fancy things down at the the middle or the junior high. But again, it's a tool for us. It's not the end in itself. It's just a tool and a process of design. You know, kids will use it in the engineering classes or in the in the design process and we even have kids using that tool for Science Olympia. They make parts for their robots and you know, manufacture the, you know, just different components that are needed if they don't can't buy it. And just two other things that I have. This is a spoon that was made by the router. I won't pass this around. This is the base for a violin that was made by a student in the for Science Olympia competition two years ago. And that was made on the laser engraver. In addition, we fly ultralight planes and so we cut out balsa framing members for the wings. Now, in the the last thing is the CNC router that we have. Again, a couple of projects allows us to take a stool that we would have made in that class and customize that stool for, you know, the fisherman who's got engraved a fish on the face of that. Here is an SU top, which also has some epoxy filled the engraving part of it. And you know, these are projects that the kids come up with and are capable of doing and taking some of their woodworking projects to the next level. And then a student came in and, you know, desired to make a American flag. And again, this is all done on the CNC router. It requires them to put this into a design and I don't know if I'm pass that around. Careful of Florida. It's ready to fall off. It's a political thing. I know some people like to see it go away. But again, these are projects that again, take the the traditional woodworking into the the twenty first century. We now can manufacture things with, you know, with tools that again, have been out there for a while and but we're just now getting them and exposing the kids to them. Because they're operating these machines, the kids who graduate are going into the companies that are now manufacturing this stuff and they need kids who know how to operate the the machines that we're now teaching them.
So the middle picture you see up here is taken at Gillette Rowan Middle School. You'll see some of the 3D printers in the background. Each of our secondary schools have an array of 3D printers and then on the far right hand side, you see the computer computerized numerical control router, which is at the high school. We purchased that a few years ago. The district did. And again, I want to thank the district for all the support and encouragement they have provided. They really give our students a lot of opportunity to kind of dive into, as Marty mentioned, the twenty first century skills and mix some of these skills with the traditional skills that you would have seen in industrial arts. If you go to the next page, this was a course we introduced a couple of years ago, which Marty currently teaches. So I'll turn this over to Marty.
And we started Project Lead the Way fifteen plus years ago. I can't remember, maybe twenty years ago now. And, you know, we introduced or with that, we introduced the robotics that we taught within two of the courses. We then took and expanded that into a club that we did with the engineering club after school, got more into the robotics competitions and things like that. And so we said, you know, we need to do more with this with more competitions because that's what generates a lot of enthusiasm and excitement for the kids. And so a couple of years ago, we did start the automation robotics course. So using stuff that we are already teaching in our other classes and now expanding on it a little bit further. And again, the sky's the limit, you know, whatever we can, you know, you know, get for resources to bring into this class, it just takes the kids to that next level. We talk about how they can get jobs in in programming and operating and utilizing these robotics, not just with this robot here, but, you know, again, taking it to a very competitive level, which again, hones their skills and gets them excited about the future.
This next course was introduced this year at Sisro North Syracuse High School with a lot of encouragement from the administration and support. And again, this is another course that Marty currently teaches.
So again, I had been thinking about this for a couple of years now with the advent of, you know, us being in a corridor, you know, and a test corridor for drones. Okay, so we couldn't, you know, stand by the sideline and just watch this take place. So so we introduced this course. Again, it's difficult to start up a new course in a pandemic. So we're working our way through it. So the drone that you see on the on the slideshow. So last semester, the fall semester, the kids built this drone. Okay, they have seven of these. We built them, you know, from kits that were that we purchased. And but unfortunately, they were unable to program them and get them to fly. The spring semester, though, brought a new set of kids. And so now they're picking up instead of us taking this apart like we normally would and rebuild it, the kids now are programming it. So they're learning how to control or how to connect it to the controller and then take and fly them. Now, these are difficult drones to fly. Okay, they're not like the drones that you take out of your take out of the package and start flying. Okay, we do have those drones, though. Okay, so we bought some tele drones, okay, which are again, they're not quite take out of the package, but their ability is to, you know, take it out of the the box with a little bit of work and an iPhone or any phone, smartphone, and they fly it with their phone. Okay, and so now they have the ability to to get used to the concept of flying a drone, okay, before they get to, again, flying something that takes a little bit more skill. You could pass that around. In addition to that, the tele drone has the ability for us to connect to and program it using the programming courses that are taught at the high school. Matt Matt Harbinger takes and teaches the the scratch, which again, the kids could use to now do the programming for that. And then maybe you've seen some of the light shows that are now being displayed throughout the world using this type of drone. All right. And then her next connection is going to be linking up with the media department and taking what we call a Mavic Air. So this is a very portable drone and very easy to fly. But its capabilities are to basically take video. Okay, so it's designed to with a very nice gimbal camera on it to take and take video pictures. Okay, or just take stills. Now, again, it's not just for videography, though. But we also another avenue for the kids to get into is, you know, doing inspection of roofs. So I've inspected, of course, the roofs over at CNS and I can tell you all about them if you'd like. We could inspect, you know, the light towers and things like that. All right. So again, these are, you know, teaching the killed kids some skills of where they could use this in a job that when they graduate say, yeah, I know how to fly a drone and I could do that for this company. Again, being a roofer in the summers when I worked here for twenty years. Again, I would have loved to do this because again, it would save me climbing up and down ladders a lot. Okay. Plus, it gives a a nice bird's eye view. But they're using them in all different companies for, you know, inspecting power lines, inspecting, you know, for the real estate industry is is just eating these things up and but they need people to focus on that and be able to do that. So again, these are very easy to fly and the capabilities are are endless for what the kids can do with them.
With the pandemic, I know it's been a challenge for Marty to get through the whole course, but I know one of the things that he down the road, we're going to be preparing students for is to take the FFA part one oh seven exam and this prepares students to get a commercial drone pilot license and this will allow them to work for places like search and rescue, security firms, as Marty mentioned, maybe roofing firms. And of course, in a foreseeable future, you know, they're talking about Amazon and UPS still using drones for delivery of packages and medical supplies and other goods. So that's hopefully right around the corner for our students. This, one of the things that we had in place a couple of years ago was a STEM program through Project Lead the Way. It was known as Project Lead the Way Launch, in which our students learned about programming and using using automation and robotics to provide some understanding of STEM backgrounds. So unfortunately, that program went by the wayside because of some funding issues, but we got together this past year, the all the techno technology education teachers and myself and developed the four year program to implement the automation and robotics programs over a four year period. As Marty mentioned, we currently have a high school course. But we're looking to not only introduce programming, robotics, automation in seventh grade in our technology education classes, but also build sequentially upon that into eighth grade, ninth grade and tenth grade with with not only an intermediate program, but also an advanced program. So what we're looking at is again, a four year plan. And again, I want to thank the district for being very supportive in this initiative because in the end, our students will benefit greatly from this. So in seventh grade, most of you know, we have a twenty weeks of technology education. Our students take twenty weeks of education or technology education in grade seven, twenty weeks in grade eight. So we're looking at implementing a ten week course in grade seven using a current Vex IQ equipment that we have at the middle schools. So it's very nominal cost this first year to get up and running. They use the Vex IQ is a little different than what Marty's used to at the high school, which is known as Vex EDR. It's almost like a Lego snap and click together. But that's what's also utilized in the middle school robotics competitions. They still still use a Vex IQ. And that's the reason why we decided to stick with the Vex IQ in seventh grade. Because just to get those kids familiar with it, encourage them to continue on and then hopefully participate in the robotics competitions, both at the junior high and high school. In eighth grade, the following year, we're going to be implementing a five week course. We're going to introduce a new type of Vex equipment, which is a little bit different. They use they they aren't they use basically bolts and nuts and so forth to connect them instead of like a Lego set. We will have to purchase these initially, but again, because it's a five week course, we can kind of rotate it around at the eighth grade level and and hopefully build upon the purchases each year. It uses a different type of programming. It's C C++ which many of you are familiar with or Python based programming. And then the following year at ninth grade, again, we build upon that and will introduce a course which Marty currently teaches teaches with a Vex EDR components. And then the following year, introduce an advanced course. So we're going to we're going to keep the introductory courses at both ninth grade and tenth grade, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade. But again, then introduce an advanced course in twenty four, twenty five. So again, we have that's our four year plan in terms of introducing automation and robotics throughout the secondary buildings. And as many of you know, has Marty even talked about, we've been competing for several years in Vex robotics competitions at the junior high level. Again, it's using the Vex IQs at the high school level, it's EDRs. Marty's made the states a couple of times. He can speak to his experience. But I also want you to know that at the junior high level, Alex Parsons has got a group of enthusiastic students. Last year, they they qualified for the national event, which was in Louisville. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, they weren't able to attend because they canceled the competition. This year, they actually made the world competition, which is going to be virtual and that's the last weekend May. So there's about five or six students competing at the junior high in the world competition. So it'll be exciting and and something to look forward to. If you would speak to your experience.
Well, again, the nice thing about this is, you know, the programming and the thought process that the kids are learning and now at this earlier age is just going to launch them even further. So when they get to college, this doesn't go away. They're they're teaching this programming. And so they start with a graphical programming language in the in the very early ages. They work up to the C++ or the C basic programming. And then they go right into college and they're doing the same stuff. Okay, and they're taking that to the next level. So this is really giving the kids a leg up plus putting this competition on their transcripts. Okay, that showing gives them again, another advantage over their counterparts who maybe have not taken those courses before. So again, in this programming even takes itself into not just robotics and automation, it takes it into manufacturing. Okay, so these are skills that are just transcending the whole world industry that we have right now.
And as Marty mentioned previously, these are the same components that we use in our pre-engineering Project Lead the Way program. Are there any questions?
Probably more of a comment. It's just really cool to see how the things that the kids are doing. The some of those pieces that they're marketable, you could sell them. They look so great. Especially in the map, but there's one of our students made that map.
Mm hmm. And again, probably a dozen or so of. Mm-hmm. And again, probably a dozen or so of those have gone out the door with kids that make them.
Yeah, that's just how exciting to be a kid, you know, in the, in high school and junior high right now, learning this type of um, yeah, these skills.
And the programming is very transferable into a lot of different areas.
So I saw the Python language there, which can filter over to engineering. If you, you know, you don't want to go into robotics, you could take Python to any level of, I believe, engineering. That's great.
So again, I want to thank the board and, and administrators here for their encouragement and their continued support of the technology education program.
John, I, I do have a question. So what I'm seeing here, starting next year, is that all seventh graders and then the following year, all eighth graders will go through a program.
That's correct.
And then if they're very interested in it, then they will go to a half credit, whatever, with the teacher and then up to the high school. So I like the way you have it. Each year, you're going to add on. But I, I just want, you know, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'm going to say something in about ten minutes, but Marty, thank you for everything you do for the school district. He's part of this uh Science Olympiad, has been for years and years and years building the automobiles. A lot of these board members don't know about that, but the competition going to Texas with automobiles and and building them. It's just amazing what you've done with technology in this school district. I did have the chance, I don't know if it's last year, John, or the year before, where you hosted it at the junior high, the competition.
Two years ago.
Very, very, yeah, time flies. Very impressed. It was a Saturday and I went, but I really was impressed with the number of girls involved in it from the school districts. I don't know our school district, but that impressed me that young ladies are, it was junior high students, I believe, and
Yes, it was.
It was middle school from some of the small school districts. Um, just amazing. So, just amazing program.
That's a six through nine pro um competition. And again, that's um we're looking forward to Alex Parsons and, and the students competing in the world competition later this month. Okay, thank you very much.
You know, thank you. That's impressive, especially being one of the ones who came from the shop days in the seventies. It's, uh, I'm jealous. Really.
I made a shelf once.
Well, I wasn't joking. I literally made a cutting board and ashtray. It was, but that's what you did. That's uh, it's a long time ago. Huh, I gotta get past this now. Okay. I just felt very old. Board of Education Committee reports. I will start over here with Mrs. Scanlon. Policy.
Um, our policy committee is meeting again on May eleventh.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Crabtree Legislative, I know you had a meeting. I missed it. I'm sorry.
Last week, um, Paul, we had a meeting, um, April twenty-eighth. Um, some of the items that were discussed, um, we looked at the state budget, and it pertained to education and how positive it was from our meeting from the month before. Um, Al Sterpy was uh at our meeting as he has been every single month. And um, we thanked our state legislators. As, as I said, last meeting, um, Dan had said to send a thank you to them and appreciate that. Um, Don, I can't stand off each month. I put him on, on the spot, but he briefly talked about our budget along with Dan, and I liked the way he presented it this time, because he told about the programs, especially social wellness and so forth, that we're, we're going to add. Um, then we spoke about the important dates. Thank goodness, we have Connie Gibson. Um, tomorrow's the annual meeting. Um, and then um, I think it's May eleventh. Is that a deadline, Connie, for the absentee ballots? You still can do that. Um, Connie's so great about that, you know, and the, and the vote will be May eighteenth from six AM to nine PM. I had to speak to my friend because she's having some work done at nine, that she still has three hours to get over here, because she's not going to be in good shape after that. Um, Lori Cook is amazing, as we all know, um, how we're going to communicate this budget vote to the community, all the modern ways that we do it that I don't get involved in. But uh, thank you for Lori. Um, within seconds, she had the district dispatch uh sent to each of us um, on the committee, and um, it's a job well done, um, really well done. Um, our next meeting will be um June second, and we're going to continue Zoom because that way we can get our state legislatures to come. One thing is, is Mary um also has, we have senior reps on our committee, and I have all senior reps on our committee, so we need to replace them. So I've asked them to bring somebody to the next Zoom meeting, which is June second, um, to uh introduce themselves and get some new uh blood into the commit, committee. And the last thing is, and Paul, I know you did this last year, is to bring some issues. What issues do you want besides the budget? What, you know, we worked hard this year on the budget and really communicating with our um with our legislators, but we need to have some new issues that we might want to look at. And then I'll turn it over to my two committee people, if they would like to say anything about the legislative committee.
Uh, you're right, Al Sterpy, as well as our other representatives, have been particularly wonderful. I'm so glad to hear you say that uh Zoom calls will continue because we are getting quite the presence. And with presence, we get ears. They're listening. Al Sterpy, as I know, just because he's probably more vocal of all. Uh, he's, he's getting things done for us, coming to visit the schools personally, which is amazing. Uh, we also have an event coming up with, um, help me, with uh one of the women in Utica, I think it was. She came out with um, an event, and so we're getting some collaboration there. Um, and as far as, you know, definitely ideas, the social emotional thing that I'll touch on, um, board member, member comments. We're, they're hearing us. They know we need more money to address that, that there's not enough counselors, and they're hearing us. And um, so great job getting everybody together.
Good. Okay, thank you. Superintendent Bowles, comments?
Thank you. Just want to acknowledge again, Teacher Appreciation Week, and this year has been a year like no other, and without our teachers um being flexible, we've changed programs uh from hybrid, remote. There's been words that are uh symptomatic, asymptomatic, uh synchronous, asynchronous. Um, people have had to shift gears constantly in the work that they've done to educate our children of tomorrow has been amazing. So as you see with Mr. Rice and Mr. Minor, these are the things that our educators are doing to make sure that our students are prepared for a changing workforce and environment. And uh, instructionally, they are shifting gears constantly, which is not easy. So again, um, thank you to the work that they're doing and continue to do. Um, it is not easy, but uh, when they talk about essential workers, uh, they, they too are very much essential. I want to make a comment that we hosted a vaccination clinic at the high school on Tuesday of last week. Just over a hundred and twenty individuals were vaccinated. Um, so that was uh nice to see. And um, we also hosted some uh legislators, Senator Mannion and Al Sterpy were in the district last week, and uh they are impressed with uh the work that our, our staff and our, our teachers are doing and engaging our students. Uh, also, this past week, it was nice to see some uh normalcy where uh popped in, girls lacrosse was on our stadium on Saturday and our boys' baseball and girls' softball were able to play on their home fields for the first time in a year and a half. There's been a lot of work that's gone into fixing up some critical issues on both fields. Matt Irwin, Darren Crouch, Aaron have worked hard on both sites regarding just a little bit of everything from drainage issues, irrigation, uh, irrigation leveling. Um, so that was nice to see on a Saturday that not only were they on their home field and able to play, but uh, the parents were able to see their children. Working on a, a budget screencastify uh to go along with the newsletter, so that was something that uh, was in process last week and uh looking at uh doing a few more things to get the budget uh information out to the staff. So Don, myself, and Lori will be working together to do some more things uh, uh, so that we can communicate that uh and not doing the individual in-person roadshow. Um, I think that's uh the last comment that I have, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Farfalia.
Okay, thank you.
What's Board of Education comments? I know you had, so you mentioned you had some.
Yes, I always do. Um, the musical. Wow. This is our year. I know Terry's seen it, and I've seen it three times, um, because I love the music, because it's from the seventies to the eighties. Um, you could just tell, as I was talking to Mark earlier, they had fun. You know, they've been practicing together. They got back to school to do that. They wore their masks. They were safe. But they had fun, and it was um just an awesome program. And so, you know, he knows the people, Renee Frontal, Kimberly Panic, Edward, Lisa Stewart, Karen Patterson. They worked on this. Um, Renee wrote it in forty-eight hours, and it was about their high school life, and I got so excited. I ran downstairs after I saw it the first time, got my yearbook out from Onadoga Central, contacted some people I haven't contacted in forty years, seriously. And um, just brought back so many memories of my high school, and I, I thank them for that, you know? Because I haven't thought about that in years. Um, I got invited, by the way, by the um athletic director at Liverpool to go over and see the boys play lacrosse against CNS, and of course, we won. I told them before the game started, we would win. Um, and Dr. Leahy, Chris Leahy's son is on the team. He's a tall dude. Um, scores a lot of goals. There was one boy, the guy, I think, six assists. That was amazing. You know, that tells you the team works together. And the other thing is Giovanni, the, the gentleman who um did the broadcasting during the, he's the goalie, and he talks the whole game. And he tells like Mr. Leahy's son where to play, and it's amazing, and they're very, very good. Uh, we have new coaches there, and they're very, very, very good. And then the last thing, of course, and Dan already mentioned it, um, teacher, I had something to share here, because you know me and the phone, Michael. Um, Teacher Appreciation Week. Not enough can be said about our teachers this year, how they hung together. Um, you know, I'm a former teacher. I, I know I couldn't have done that virtual. Michael would have been in my room twenty-four, seven, or Dan would have been uh, uh, or Don, because I just, I couldn't do it. But I, I wanted to really thank the retiree teachers. You know, the school district is, the foundation is the retired teacher, and this is a teacher that goes way back in our school district. Um, was at Lakeshore, and I won't mention her name, and she said it how I feel. We were so blessed to teach in the North Syracuse Central School District and be instrumental in helping so many students attain their ability. And the best part is, teaching was part of our lives. It was never a job. And I think that's how our teachers feel. It's not a job. You enjoy coming in. Some days are better than others. But you get through at least to one child that day, you made a difference. And Paul, you know that as a former teacher, and your wife knows that, especially at first grade, so um, we, we are lucky. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of things. Um, you're right, you know, just to echo on what Bob said about Renee and writing that play, and when our young, one of our young ladies who sang such an incredible message for young girls. Um, you know, I got emotional when I was watching this, and this, there was a boy in the play who was trying to control her, and she broke into, you don't owe me. I'm like, what a message to send to young girls of like, no, this is not what we do here. It was wonderful to see that written into a play, and what a voice on this girl. We have so many incredible singers, like every year, I just tune in. I'm like, okay, who's it going to be this year? That's going to be, just blow us away. Um, again, and again, echoing with the teachers, I've talked to some that, you know, they're, they should retire. They can't leave. They can't leave their kids, and it's just wonderful to, to see the teachers, and, you know, speaking of that virtual and along with in school. I don't want to do that with adults. I can't imagine trying to do this with these, with kids. Uh, so you know, the hours that they're putting in, I wish we could do more. Um, outside of those comments, um, we had a wonderful meeting with the canteen, the high school and the junior high and social workers and principals again. And this collaboration, I, I can't say enough, um, what Dan has helped bring together of the social emotional needs, the mental health that the kids, the kids are struggling. Um, and you know, it's starting to be shown more and more that they're really struggling, and what we did today was we almost, I want to call it a, a tree that we, uh, that we put out there as far as what the canteen can do if they see something, what the school can do if they see something, and how the collaborative work is really going to help the kids. And then getting the kids involved and getting the teachers, and we're being told they're stepping up, of course, they always do, but they're stepping up. And they're speaking out, and they're getting the information out to the, is it what, two-on-one? It, if there's, um, if something is happening, they have, the kids have a hotline to call, and uh, they're really getting the message and doing everything they can. Um, also, this, what was it, last week? I lose track of my days, but um we were able to get uh three superintendents, including Dan, on a, a phone uh Zoom call with an international speaker, uh principal of a Bronx school that does the hydroponic plants. And bringing that information to this school, getting grant work to see if we can't get it done. And uh, these three um school districts that were involved were food insecure areas that really need the technology and could really use the technology, and um if anybody wants that information, we've got an hour-long Zoom call. It went on for quite a while with a lot of information. But the kids who are involved in working with this program that's been put together, grades improve, attitudes improve, attendance improves, everything improves, and uh very, very excited that we made that call happen. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to our routine action items, and I'll ask for a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Motion from Miss Kruger, second from Mr. Harrington. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that's carried. Motion please to place B and C before, is consideration of classification of school placement for disabled children by the Committee on Special Ed and the placement of preschool disabled. Motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Miss Kruger. Any discussion on B and C there before us? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried unanimously. Discussion action item, A, Appointment of Voting System Specialists, registrars and a custodian of the voting machines for the May eighteenth budget vote and school board elections. A motion put that before us. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Miss Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Have a recommendation to amend the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one district calendar. Motion place that before us. Motion, Mr. Marizio, second from Miss Kruger. And that was addressed in the Friday letter. Any questions?
Good comment. My thirty-six years of teaching, um, the last week of school, Dr. Melvin once or twice gave us half-days. This is amazing that the last day of school for K through, help me out, Dan, five, four?
Last, last day of school for K through twelve will be the twenty-first. Those students that have to take a Regents on the twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth need to do so. Um, the state reduced the number of Regents exams to four this year, but uh, the one caveat, um, if there's no Regents exam that day, students do have to attend.
Right. But the thing for elementary is, it's always eighty-five degrees that last week, and you have them a full day, and, and um, matter of fact, the last year, Dr. Melvin was here. He almost made us go on a Monday afterwards, but he didn't quite do that. But for elementary teachers, there's a lot to do, and to have And to have Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and into Friday to do it, thank you. I'm sure you're going to get a lot of thanks.
Okay, that's before us. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Pose that is carried. Recommendation, I mean, sorry, put C before us, please, a motion to put C before us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Herman. I knew it, man. I was just delayed for a second. I need water. Any, any discussions? All right, this is a recommendation to abolish the 1.0 FTE Motor Recommit Operator and create the FTE Maintenance Worker 2, which was addressed in the Friday letter. All in favor? Pose that is carried. D, the acceptance of the internal audit report. If you could place that before us, please. Motion, Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion on the audit report? Yes.
Who are we discussing it with? So on page 12, I mean, who do I address my question to? Okay, sorry.
One of the Ds.
On, on page 12, it mentions that we'll be out of compliance with the change to the Uniform Guidance Procurement Policies and that we have to update our board policies.
Does the accounting procedures manual or? Oh, no, the policies, okay.
So are we, I just want to know, are we going to be addressing that with our policy committee? Because I hadn't heard. Okay. Okay, so that. Good answer. Well, when I see that we're going to be out of compliance because of a policy issue, that gets my attention.
Since your, since your page is open, could you look to 13 just for a second? I, I was, it's just in regards to the BOSI, BOSI's developing a security awareness program. I know there's a little bit of lag in this report. Where, where's the status of that? I mean, and the reason I ask, I mean, they're, they do, I mean, USB drops, if anybody knows what that is, is a little scary. But info sharing, phishing attacks, it's all kinds of penetration testing. I wonder if that, where that stands with BOSI's. I guess the DPO, yes. Is that, we haven't done that yet, I'm assuming, but. Or we're collecting information on there. Because I was reading this as if we have a program through BOSI's where there, we're actually.
Yeah, Chris, Dr. Leahy is, has not only led the process here, but we've, we've subscribed to that service. We participate in meetings regularly. It's, it's moving.
We're going to have people trying to bust in here, is what this, is not how we're doing it?
No.
That's how I read what it looks like.
We are doing, we are doing some work with our IT folks to, to test the system, penetration testing, if you're familiar with that concept.
That's what, yeah, that's what I, I used that word earlier, and that's what I read this as saying. And I thought there was a BOSI's program that they were actually going to be doing that.
Yes, so, so.
Understood it correctly, I guess.
Yeah, I think you did. You know, this is a work in process that we're, we're on the journey to, to be in compliance with Ed Law 2D and to continue to, to monitor our systems to ensure that we're secure. And that, you know, I don't want to say we're bulletproof, but we're doing a lot to prevent breaches. And that's a effort here at North Syracuse, as well as working with BOSI's.
I just, it kind of put a light bulb on me because I'm assuming that people have a manual that they have read or something they sign for internet, responsible internet use policy or whatever.
You have to acknowledge that every time you log on here.
You're going to be sending out phishing emails, and we're going to, in this, it looks like, look like, look at who clicks on them.
Yes.
And if, if I'm understanding, USB drops, they, they actually physically place USB thumb drives around and see who pops them in. Is that what that is?
That could be part of it. We're looking at, it's a kind of a broader scheme. And we're working with BOSI's in, in terms of having a rubric. So we look at identifying what our threats are. That's an ongoing process. How do we protect the systems that we have in place? How are we responding? Should there be breach or concern that we're made aware of? How do we recover any lost data that we have? And how do we communicate that to the community? And then where are our levels of, of concern? And again, everything is labeled one through four. And we have about 180 indicators that we're working through, prioritizing them as we move forward. It's an ongoing process. And what's interesting is there are areas that we're doing, most areas we've acknowledged. And we're trying to move from level one to two to three to four. But some areas, it's going to, it's going to take some time, even just inventorying all the data systems and all the programs we're using. That's an ongoing process that we're getting a handle on. We have systems in place. Now it's just continuously going through that and looking closely at everything we're using. And we've changed a lot of the, the culture in our districts. People realize now you can't just upload things. You can't just say, hey, I need this for my program. And we've created a system, a protocol where the teachers, if let's say you're a rural language teacher, you want to use a program, you're going to have to go to your director. Your director looks and sees if it's appropriate with your curriculum. You're, if they approve of it, then it kind of moves up the chain, and then it goes to TJ and I. We look, does it meet our requirements in terms of Ed Law 2D? If it does meet those requirements, then we can green light. And then we, then the director goes back to look, say, is there a source of funding to support this? And so we've really tried to clean up our process before was these one-off requests. We would have several teachers, perhaps in different departments doing things. So what we're trying to do is create a systematic approach. The NIST rubric is a huge help for us because it identifies all the things we should be focused on. And it gives us a sense of as we complete this and add things in, we say, hey, where are we with this at our next data meeting? And then we continue. And between these data meetings, we're working with BOSI's too, as far as their Ed Law 2D costs, or getting updates and feedback from them and touching base with their districts on how they're doing as we move forward.
Thank you.
And since the Audit Committee has authorized Dark Angelo to focus on IT next year, we'll get a full, full-blown detailed report from them in their next year's report.
I have another question. What about, is there any security awareness training, like online courses available to, for everyone, like mandatory?
Yep. And we have something ready to go. We're going to probably put it out in mid-May. And, and what it is, it's an annual training, all teachers, everybody who has an email account has to sit through. It's about 25 minutes. And as they work through it, explains what Ed Law 2D is, explains what, what are some of the best practices of securing both your laptop, desktop, your cell phone and all that? What, you know, and even some more fundamental things of what is personally identifiable information? And what are the things we can and can't share? I think we've made some gains there. But that training is, it's all ready to go. It'll be deployed in mid-May. We've been working with BOSI's. We wanted to help hold back a little bit because there were so many things that teachers were overwhelmed with at this point in this school year. But that has to be done this year.
Thank you. I did see some comments on page nine about access. Has those been addressed to be more immediate?
I don't have those directly.
That's on, on page nine, number two. I see that there was something that was addressed and taken care of. But it seems after the fact and maybe something more immediate. Is there a control that's going to be put in place for that to be a terminated employee?
Yes, so we had item two there. We had a form, one former employee still had access to IEP Direct. And yes, we have a process in place to annually review all of our accesses and to, and to make those changes. I want to just, there were no, you know, obviously, they, they indicated there were no breaches or no utilization of that. And, but we, we, we did deactivate that, that one employee, employees activation after they left. And, and so we'll redouble our efforts to make sure that gets done in the future in a more timely fashion.
Thank you for clarifying that because it looked like it was more than just one. I could see how one would slip through the crack. The way it's written, it looked like it was not just one. So thank you for clarifying.
Okay, the reports before us. Yes, Mr. Crabtree.
This is just a comment. Has nothing to do with the report. Policy and legislative have to report to this board. I suggest that, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, you meet three or four times a year, because I used to be on it, that you give us some kind of report after your meeting. I, I would appreciate at a board meeting if the Audit Committee.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? We have D before still. Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. Item E, Request to Approve the Corrective Action Plan Submitted to the Office of the State Comptroller. Motion, please. Motion, Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Kruger. Any comments there? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose and that is carried. Motion for F, please, to seek a resolution for our capital outlay project. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Scanlon. That was discussed in the Friday letter also. No questions, all in favor? Pose that is carried. We have acknowledgement of gifts. You'll see it on G. Can you get a motion placed that before us? Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Marizio. All in favor? Pose that is carried. Instructional Personnel Report A, a motion, please, place that before us. Motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Yeah, we, we have an amendment to where it is 1375 per day, and it should read 1375 per hour? Okay, and that can be just a friendly amendment, so I'm not going to vote on the amendment, then vote on the item. I'm going to assume that's just a correction, and we're fine there. Okay, all in favor? Pose and that is carried. In Support Staff Personnel B, a motion placed that before us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Harrington. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose and that is carried. Okay, this time, I'm going to make a motion, move an executive session for the purpose of reviewing employment record of one individual with no action to follow. If I get a second, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose and that is carried. And then, please, a motion for adjournment. Motion from Ms. Scanlon, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor? Pose and that is carried. Thank you very much.